It's 5 o'clock. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting of the Belton Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. A quorum of board members is present. This meeting has been duly called and a notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. Y'all may be seated. We will begin our meeting with a workshop. Jared, I believe you're up first. Come on up and talk to us about that. Oh, Kurt's gonna come up. That's even better.
Just kidding, just kidding. The 2017 Bond Projects update.
I'm actually driven out there. There's a lot of good stuff going on out there.
There is. And actually, first project is the Charter Oak Elementary School. And we're about 80 days from actually being substantially complete with that project. I finally can say that the front masonry has been completed since the last time we were here. So if we look back at the previous photos, we have the roughly 30 different classrooms, the gymnasium, library, new admin area in there. Previous board meeting, we looked at it. The roofing hadn't been completed yet, and they're still working on the masonry. We looked at the main feature wall, which is just up here in the top right corner, that they had framed it out. As I found out from the principal, it looks kind of like a guitar, half of a guitar, and it actually shows up a little bit better in one of the next photos we'll get to. But here is the exterior of the building. We have, all of the roofing has been completed. All the mechanical units were set on the roofing. The skylights have been set. All the masonry around the building has been done. And all the curbs and gutters for all the roads around the building have been completed. So basically, besides finishing up the landscaping, all the work is really going on inside the building now, and it is taking shape. So if we kind of look at the next photos, these are some of the high-impact spaces, as I was walking around, that have been kind of finished. So in the bottom-left corner there, we have the gymnasium. So we have the white-type ceiling with the red joists going across there. They've all been finished painting, along with the walls have been painted. We have in the middle photo, whoops, which is that feature wall with the little bit of the guitar cut out there, that they have all the sheet rock in, on there. All the curves have been secured. The soffits have been created. And they're already beginning to bring tile from the pre-K, or from the 4th grade, 5th grade wing down. So they've gotten the tile in the restrooms on that side, and they're beginning with the wall tile as they come back towards the main admin area and then go over to the pre-K area. In the top-left corner, we have one of the classrooms that has basically been completed except for the drywall ceiling. Since these photos were taken, they've already started the polishing of the concrete in the classrooms. I know Dr. Kincanon was out there, and it looks amazing right now.
It's great.
And then this large photo is actually the portals into the classroom areas. So you can kind of see this angular shape that's gonna be on all the portals going into the classroom areas, kind of announcing that you're entering the different classroom wings, along with the color schemes and the tile and everything else in there. They've been working really hard on the skylights. And I have some great 360 photos, but it's really hard to show. But you look at up at them, and it's the B and the E shapes, and they look great right now. Are there any questions on this project? So then we get to our 400,000-square-foot high school. So to kind of orient everybody, in the back corner here is where the baseball and softball, and then the football field here. Football field's there, and the baseball, softball. We've got the gymnasium here, that as you can see in these photos, doesn't have any of the roofing on it or the structure yet. We've got down here, the classroom, the two-story classroom wings. So they've been kind of working on the two different sides of the site, and they're gonna be connecting in between those when they finish their concrete pours. And so if we go to the next photos, so this is really focused on that classroom wing here. So we've got, if we look over here where we saw all the structural steel in the first photos, we now have, the second floor has been poured the concrete, and they're working underneath that second floor currently. We have, actually flipped, these are on the gymnasium side and the auditorium side, all those little bottom photos. So this bottom-left photo is the gymnasium. So all the roofing has been installed. They've got it all set up there, and they've started the roofing on it. So you go inside the space, and you can see how large the volume is for the basketball. This middle photo is actually looking from around the football field back towards the gymnasium. So you see the gymnasium, and then you see the Performing Arts Center, the structure of the steel behind that. And then this is that large volume of the Performing Arts Center where the stage is at. If we go to these photos, so this is that second-floor classroom wing, and this is all the work on these two bottom photos that have been occurring underneath that area. So they've got mechanical roughing. The ducts have been put in place. They've got electrical work going on. They've been spraying the fireproofing on there, and they have poured the glass aggregate concrete that goes down the hallways already, which is, it's gonna be a great feature, along with, at the same time, they're polishing or doing the deep grind at the cafeteria area, too. Are there any questions on this project? This one's been going great, and each time I come out there, it seems like it's a new building because there's so much going on in the different areas.
It's fun to watch the progression of the construction.
Only a few more months till this one's finished.
Few more. Okay. Well, is that all?
Yep, that's it. Any other questions?
Well, thank you for that update. It's exciting to see all the progress. And, you know, I know a number of us have driven out there, and it is exciting to see. It's also exciting trying to explain it, too. Well, that's gonna be, and that's gonna be, uh, thank you.
Yeah. It's great, you know, as you drive up, you see all the different cranes that are up there right now. I've actually had some other people that said, "Hey, I've seen, you know, three, four cranes. What is that?" And I'm like, "Well, it's the new high school out there," and they're all excited to hear about it, so.
Definitely a conversation starter. Thank you so much. Okay, so next up is our technology infrastructure review by Dr. Bering, Burning, Burning.
Hello.
Hello, how are you?
Evening. My name's Andy Burning. I'm president of the Renaissance Institute. And I always feel it's important to say, we don't sell, we don't have hardware, we don't sell hardware or software. We're fee-only advisors, and so I think that's important to get out there. My goal for this evening is really, oop, let's see, thank you, is an overview, and I just have a few slides, an overview of the network infrastructure review and planning. And by network, I mean your computer network. So my goal tonight is to define some terms, provide an overview of your current network, provide an update on the, on the network upgrade initiatives that are going on, and then provide a strategic path forward. And I want to thank, you know, Mike Nielsen and his technology team. They've been, they've been a great, they're going through a lot of hard work right now to, to upgrade the infrastructure and do a lot of other things. I always put terms in. Techies like their acronyms, so I'm not gonna read all these to you, but there are a couple that, the wide-area network, that, and things that we have to pay for, so I wanna put the terms in, and I'll go back to these later if you need, but I don't wanna sit here and read those to you. The one thing I do, the one initiative I do want to explain a bit is E-Rate. So E-Rate is education rate. It's a program run by the FCC and Schools and Library Consortium. And you all contribute to E-Rate. If you look at your phone bill every month, you'll see that there's a, you give maybe a dollar and sometimes $9 to this, this fund, and it's about $4 billion a year. And that goes to all schools and libraries in the United States. So this is a big deal. And you have a good E-Rate consultant that works with the district, but E-Rate funds a lot of these technology initiatives. So that's why it's so important to, to be able to leverage these things, these, these funding sources, and the, as you go through these initiatives. So there's two E-Rate categories. Number one is the services, like your internet service and your, your wide-area network service. And then category two is internal connections. I say that's the blinky light stuff, all the stuff in the closet, you know, that you open the closet and see all the blinky lights, then, and E-Rate will fund the majority of that as well. Funding is based on your free and reduced numbers. You are eligible for a 60% discount. So this isn't a grant. This is, this is real money, a 60% discount on all these services every year. So that's why it's so important. It can mean hundreds of thousands of dollars to Belton ISD. Your current network, your wide-area network is a 1-gigabit circuit provided by Spectrum, and you are, you are outgrowing that. That's a good thing, a lot of computer activity, so we, we have to start talking about upgrading that. The contract for that ends June 30th of 19. And I should go back for a moment and say, the E-Rate year always goes July 1 through June 30th. So that's why we always align these dates, July 1 through June 30th. You have two internet service providers, Spectrum and Grande, and you have some aging network electronics in your, in your campuses. Fairly old equipment that you need to look at and be ready to replace fairly soon. You have some options to upgrade the wide-area network. As I mentioned, you're at 1 gigabit, and you need to, your throughput is actually starting to fill that up. It is filling it up. You have three options to upgrade your wireless network. And these, these are options that will be brought back to the board for contract in February. So you're out now for an RFP on least-lit fiber, and that's really a fiber-based service where whoever wins the bid, that company will manage and own it, okay? There's also least dark, where they will just hand you off some fiber, some glass, and you put the electronics in. You buy the electronics, you being, the school district, buy the electronics, and you manage it. And then there's self-provision fiber that you completely own it. And self-provision fiber is typically used if you own the real estate between buildings. You put that in, and you, there's no recurring cost. So those, you have those three options, and then the associated network electronics. So to fund these upgrades, obviously, the combination of local MNO, bond, and E-Rate funding, as I mentioned, if, if we do it right, you'll have a 60% discount. This is never guaranteed, but I will say that E-Rate is never guaranteed, but I will say that if it's done right, typically, especially the category-one stuff, nearly 100% of the time it is funded. So it's kind of like doing your taxes. If you miss the deadlines, you're in trouble. If you don't do the, this form right, it gets kicked back. So it, it's actually very much like doing your taxes. So again, it's not guaranteed, but if we do it right, I think we have a good, good option. So Belton's 2018 E-Rate application, that's what went on last year. So I think the board saw this before I, I came on, saw this last March, is that right, Dr. Kincanon? So you applied for wide-area network services, you applied for internet services, and you applied for some network electronics to light, to light up the dark fiber. That would've been for July 1 of 2018 through June 30th of, of 2019. So you'd have been in the middle of that. The results, make sure I have a, the results of that, actually, the upgrade to WAN, just a second, the results of that application, the internet services were awarded, and they are being installed. Your existing WAN solution was continued for one year. So you're, you're working with that 1-gigabit internet for one more year. I mean, the interesting thing about, if you, if you do a private fiber or a leased fiber option, it takes like 18 months to build out. So you have to play that game of, of dates, of extending your current one more year while you're doing the build-out. Your, your network operations center electronics were awarded, and installation is in progress. Again, Mike and his team are hard at work getting those networks in. The MDF at the Belton High School was awarded, installation in progress. We also, you also did electronics for Charter Oak Elementary, and those will be installed when the construction's ready for that. So all good news. Two of the, two of your, your E-Rate applications were, were canceled. The district canceled those. That was the wide-area network services, and the electronics to light that. So we'll go back out and take another run at that. So the, the 2019 E-Rate year, which starts July 1 of 2019 through June 30th of 2020, and these are the applications that'll be brought to the board, or the contracts that'll be brought to the board in February. So that's probably really what we're doing here tonight, is prepping you for that, so you have a good understanding of what's coming your way next month. We're proposing to upgrade the, the wide-area network to 10 gigs, 10 gigabits, seeking lit or dark fiber solution, and associated electronics needed to light that fiber. We're looking at self-provision fiber for the properties that you do own, if you do know, if you do own the real estate between the properties. We're asking for a 2-gigabit internet service. So your internet pipe is getting full again, so we're gonna keep expanding that. I think you will see that for the foreseeable future, just growing and growing and growing. And that means you, there's a lot of technology activity going on there. We're also going to apply for the network electronics for Lake Belton High School. So when that construction's ready, those electronics again. And again, it's all about the timing, and it's a really good idea to do this because you leverage that, that E-Rate program and other programs and get up to 60% discount. So if it's approved, you'd be responsible for approximately 40% of the cost of this. Some really important E-Rate milestones, and I know Mike and his team are, are on this, but you, the filing of the forms, the Form 470 and the RFPs, and that's already happened. So you, you have these in place. You review the applications. That's actually happening right now. There's board approval of the contracts, which will happen next month. And then you file the Form 471 no later than March 22nd. I believe that date may have been expanded, extended, I should say, to a, to a later date. We have to check that to make sure. A lot of the employees of the SLD are, are not working with, with the shutdown. So that may even be expand, extended more. I don't know. But we have to work backwards from that. And then looking ahead for 2020, highly recommend we move internet service to your new high school, so you have a northern access, in case something happens, the north, we have a lot of redundancy that way. So you'd have one at the north, one in the middle, and one in the south. Lot of electronics for your campuses. It's time to start upgrading those electronics in the campuses. There, many of them are end-of-service, many of them are end-of-life, and it's, it's time. Battery backups, all that is E-Rate eligible. The wireless access points, E-Rate eligible, on all your campuses. You've done a good job, this district has done a good job of upgrading a lot of the wireless over the past few years, so there'll be some of that, but you've done a great job upgrading the wireless. Network cabling is eligible, and you have some pretty old cabling in some of the buildings. And again, you'd use a combination of E-Rate and local bond funds. I know that was a quick overview, but I wanted to give you a quick overview and then ask if you have any comments or questions, or if I can help with any of these things.
Certainly appreciate that. Does the board have any questions or comments or any of that?
I got, I got one question. Dr. Burning, who sets the E-Rates that, that's discounted?
So it's, it's based on your free and reduced numbers, on your, from the National School Lunch Program, and you're at, what is your free and reduced rate here?
About 46%.
46%. So there's a crosswalk table, then, that says if you're between 40 and 50, you kind of, you get a 60% discount. The discounts go all the way up to 90% for districts with high, with high poverty.
They also look at individual campus economically disadvantaged rates as well for campus-specific equipment, if I understood it. Understand that correctly.
You can, you can apply as a district, or as a campus, or even do alternative ways of, of looking at those numbers based on what's best for you.
Okay, well, I believe that's it. Thank you so much for that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Absolutely. The next, the board will go into closed session. A Texas Government Code, subchapters D and E, consultation with attorney, Texas Government Code, Section 551, 071, and personnel, Texas Government Code, Section 551, 074. We won't be gone too long, we hope. Good evening. At this time, we will reconvene in open session, and we're gonna start a little bit out of, out of order. We're gonna start with our presentation of child safety fee fund from the City of Belton for crossing guards.
You want the money first?
Awesome.
Our magic bells are not here yet.
I thought the mayor was gonna go first, but hey, that's okay. That's all right. Well, we're excited to be here tonight. Thank you, President Jordan, board members, and Dr. Kincanon, and, and the entire board. As you know, the state transportation code provides that the county commissioners may collect $1.50 for each vehicle registered in the county, and Bell County does connect that, collect that full amount. The funds received for the past year, from October 17 to September 18, are covered in the check that I'm gonna present tonight. The Belton City Council has chosen to honor the legislative intent of these fees and direct them to the intended purpose of crossing guard programs to ensure the safety of our schoolchildren. To that end, Belton is remitting these funds received from Bell County, as well as the fees collected by the city, to BISD to be used for its crossing guard program in the total amount of $22,605.67. That's an increase of about $400 over last year, so we're happy to transmit that to y'all. So on behalf of Mayor Grayson, who's here tonight, and the entire Belton City Council, the City of Belton genuinely appreciates our partnership that we have with BISD and look forward to other opportunities to work together in the future.
Well, we gratefully accept, and we recognize that not all cities return these fees to the ISDs, and we're so grateful for the partnership that we have with the City of Belton, and so blessed by what you all do.
Glad to have that, too.
So much.
So you take a photo.
I want you to give the City of Belton a big old round of applause. Here come our wonderful magic bells. Elizabeth, we all good? Okay, we were delaying just a little bit to make sure that they got here. Mayor?
Thank you for bringing Belton.
Mayor Grayson's gonna present the, or proclamation from the City of Belton.
Yes. I'm always proud of Belton, but you know, when we get to share Belton with the rest of the nation, 'cause you know, everybody's watching the Rose Bowl Parade, right? It's a tradition.
Especially when the magic bells are.
Especially when the magic bells are on there. So we're so proud of you, and I talked to Dr. Kincanon, but I was a little late about getting a proclamation to you before you went, so we get to do it after. You've done it, made us proud, televised nationally, and so now we're going to do a proclamation for the magic bells. And it says, whereas the City of Belton takes pride in being home to the Belton High School Magic Bells Drill Team, and whereas the Magic Bells Drill Team was started in 1994 and currently has 38 varsity members, including 14 seniors, 11 juniors, 12 sophomores, and three freshmen, as well as two managers, and whereas the Magic Bells were named the medium team champion and placed ninth internationally in the 2018 American Dance Drill Team Nationals Competition, and whereas the Magic Bells were named the most valuable team at 2018 HTE Dance Team Camp, and whereas in recognition of the team's quality performances throughout the year, including team camp, football games, and high-scoring competition routines, the Magic Bells were invited to join three other drill teams to perform the opening number for the Tournament of Roses Parade, as well as participating in the parade finale. Now therefore, I, Marion Grayson, mayor, on the behalf of the City Council and the City of Belton, do hereby proclaim Monday, January 14, 2019, as Magic Bells Day in this. Woo! So you have your very own day, and I don't want you to forget this day, because I was part of the school, I was in Belton High School in the 1974 Marching 100, went to the Rose Bowl Parade, which nobody do the math, but that was like 45 years ago almost. And you never forget, even as special as that was, people are still reminiscing about that day, and you will too for the rest of your lives, and you'll share it with your family. So thank you again for making Belton, continue to make Belton proud. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you ladies for representing us so well. Thank you. We're just a few minutes away before we can begin our public hearing. So I think we'll just move on over to consent agenda. Does any board member have any item they'd like to, they'd, I'd like to have pulled on the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve it as listed. I got a first from Mr. Ty Taggart. Is there a second? Chris Flor, thank you so much. That is, all hands approved? Thank you. That is approved unanimously. Okay. So, let's see here. You wanna do your?
I think you're close enough.
We're close enough for the, okay, we'll just go ahead and get started with the public hearing then. Deanna, do you wanna go ahead and get us started on that?
Hi, I'm Kevin.
Good to see you again.
Thank you. Nice to see you again as well.
We just saw each other yesterday.
So I am here to, to talk about our public hearing, and I'm actually gonna present that to the audience, because a public hearing, the purpose of a public hearing is just that, for those that are in attendance from the public to, to be aware of the work. I wanna remind everyone as we get started that everything that's in this hearing that I'm gonna talk about is data that we used as early as August. So we've presented everything in here in depth to the board. Most of that was done in August. A lot of this contains our STAR results and our academic performance. And we've already used all the, pretty much all the data in this report for our district and our campus planning, and so, but the state, they wait until everything is finalized and any appeals from the state, from campuses have been conducted, and then they produce what they consider a final report. And so I'm here tonight with that information. I'm also gonna let you know, before I get started, that I'm actually going to work with Lee and Mike Nielsen in the back to, kind of, they're gonna toggle for me between the formal presentation and then where this information is located, because everything that's located in this report is available online, and I wanna make sure that, that everyone understands where they can gather this information. So if you'll go to our first slide, let me tell you what's in the 2017-18 report. So it consists of seven parts. The first part being all of our academic performance information, and so that's how all of our students did on STAR tests. The second piece is the PMS financial report, and it actually contains finance information from the 16-17 school year, our 17-18 district accreditation status, our campus performance objectives, which include our campus plans, a report on violent or criminal instances on campuses, post-secondary institution information, and then a glossary of terms. If you'll go to the next slide, I'll break down, I'm going to break down each section for you, and then I'll show you where it's located. So when we talk about our academic performance reports, the, the state is now producing those reports in two formats. The first format is on the TEA website, and that is a, an interactive website location. And then on our website is a PD of our academic reports. If you'll go to slide three, or the next slide, within that academic report, we have a cover page, and we are going to look at the district information, and I'll show you where that is, although all campus information is on the website as well. The district information will contain our letter grade, which was a B, that if we met or improved a require, met standard or improvement required, our special education status, armed services vocational aptitude battery, and our distinctions. If you will now toggle over to our website, so you can see, if you go to beltonisd.net in the About section, and you select Accountability Ratings, everything that's required from the state report is there for both the district and all of our campuses. If you will click on the Belton ISD taper report, when that comes up, you'll see our district rating was a B. You'll see that our status was met requirements, our special education was met expectations, and the ASFAB was met expectations. The ASFAB is basically, did you or did you not administer the ASFAB? If we administered it, we met the requirement, and our students take that at high school. Also, in this section is our distinctions, and just a reminder, as a district, we earned 29 distinctions. If you'll scroll down a little bit- If you'll scroll down a little bit more, within that web, you'll see our STAR academic performance. They report by approaches levels, meets, and masters, the information for each of our assessments and all of our grade levels, and all of our campuses met accountability according to state standards. And that's important, and like I said, all of this was given to us originally in late August. We shared that with the board at that time, and we have not had any academic changes since then. So all of this information was used for designing our district and campus plans. If you'll go back to the main slide. And just a recap on the board presentation. Thanks, guys. That includes our STAR performance, just like I said, breaks it down by each of those areas, and then includes our accountability subsides. Also in our STAR performance, next slide, includes our school progress, our prior-year students, and our bilingual program, and our performances, those. And any area that we identified as areas to work on, we've placed in our campus plans for this year. The next piece includes our STAR participation, our attendance, graduation, and dropout rates. And I do want to point out that our attendance is something that we continue to work on as a priority in the district in making sure kids are at school and here every day. However, we are higher than the state and Region 12 in that area, but still a priority that we want to increase. Our graduation rate is higher than state and Region 12, significantly higher, and we reported last year zero dropouts. And then our CCMR data, this is new, this is at the high school only, and we have been working with the high school. So this was a new reporting category as to how each of these areas would be classified for career-ready, industry-based certification. We're working with the high school to improve in some of these areas. The state is also working in these areas. So specifically right now, industry-based certifications, they're looking to update what of those will count, along with some of the dual-credit coursework. The next slide also talks about our post-secondary indicators. So it talks about student performance. Included in this is student information, so it talks about class sizes, retention class sizes, and it breaks all of that down by grade level, percentage of disabilities per campus, and retention rates. It also breaks down by campus staff information, so you can see staff information by total number of staff, years of experience with staff, teacher ethnicity, and experience on the campus and leadership. Indicates also a teacher turnover rate. And then we look, we look at that information as well, and we build goals in our district plan in the areas that where we have concerns. The next section is Section 2, this is the PMS Financial Standard Report. This includes all the actual financial data for a district and then for each campus. If you'll toggle back to the website, you'll see for the district, the financial report is the fourth column, and you can see in that report, just like I said, all of the expenditures, so receipts, fund balances, dispersments, program expenditures, and tax rates. For campuses, it includes only expenditures by object and by function. Go back to the main slide, apologize for the toggling back and forth, but I really want you to see where we're at. The next slide, please, is our district accreditation status. So the state determines accreditation based on a combination of both your finance, financial status, where we were ranked superior, and our academic status, where we met expectations, and so as a district, we did receive the accredited status. And that's including no warnings. The fourth is our campus performance objectives, and so on the website, we won't have to go back, but on the website for the district and for each campus is listed the most current district plan and campus plans. I would like to highlight that this is one of the areas as a district, I believe, that we truly excel in. Our district planning and campus planning process is extremely thorough. We use data from both financial data, data from this report, data from prior reports to build our district's priorities and our goals. Our district and our campuses have meetings where they do some ongoing work, and where we're at with those goals and what we need to accomplish, and I really believe that our, I would commend all of our district leaders and all of our campus leaders for the work that they do extensively to capture what's important in moving our district forward. I'll let you, I'm telling you all the public report, but it's extensive, and we should be very proud of our leaders for that. The next piece is number five, is our report on violent or criminal incidences. We have none, so that is a blank page, but we do, we are required to report it from the state, so we have no incidences of those. The next piece is student performance and post-secondary institution data. This is, this comes out from the Higher Education Coordinating Board, they produced the report. We use it to some extent. It is a little bit challenging because they, it's not necessarily a pure report. Some of our two-year college data is skewed because they look at number of credit students have. So a student that's entering a four-year institution, their first year might be represented in a two-year because of the number of dual-credit opportunities they've had. So when they run this report, they look at your first year of enrollment with hours from, the greatest number of hours from a course. So it's a little bit skewed, but we do look at how our students are doing and where we need to tweak in our AP courses, our SAT, and that's, that was also captured on CCMR and an area of focus for us. And then the last piece is the glossary, and the glossary will provide all of the different calculations, how, all the different definitions that the state uses within this, within each piece of this report, how they calculate each piece of data, and what the sources were for gathering that data. Most sources come directly from our PMS and how we report information to our students. And then the final piece is a contact. If anyone has any questions, you're always able to contact me directly, Deanna Love Smith, but the one that, in our department that really goes into detail with all this work is Vicki Dean, and she's our Director of Accountability. So with it being a public hearing, do we have any questions? Okay, hearing none, then I, that concludes our public hearing. Do you, do you have any questions? Okay. Thank you.
Good evening and Happy New Year. First up tonight, we have the Henry T. Wasco VFW Post 4008 Patriots Pin Essay winners. Gabriel, want to start making your way up here? Gabriel Noguera and Anna Stumm, who unfortunately hasn't been able to make it yet, are eighth-grade students from North Belton Middle School, who took top honors in the annual Henry T. Wasco VFW Post 4008 Patriots Pin Essay Contest. The Veterans of Foreign Wars Contest encourages young minds to examine America's history, along with their own experiences in modern American society, in drafting a 300 to 400-word essay. Gabriel's essay placed third in the VFW District 14 Competition as well. Congratulations, Gabriel. And with him tonight is his sponsor, Mrs. Elizabeth Howson from North Belton Middle School. Mrs. Howson? Yeah? Thank you for being here.
Excuse me. So we're happy tonight to honor Edgar Miranda as our Temple Rotary Educator of the Month for January. So Edgar, if you could come on up. And Edgar's a seventh-grade math teacher and algebra teacher at Lake Belton Middle School, excuse me, eighth grade. He's in his seventh year in education, all with Belton ISD. He's got a tremendous ability to connect with kids, get them excited about learning and using that learning in real-world situations. He works tirelessly to connect with staff and better the campus, not just the kids, but the staff, so that they can impact all kids. Mr. Hobson is his principal, and he stated that Edgar is a goal-oriented self-starter that routinely sets clear goals and immediately works toward their attainment. The written and verbal communication skills he demonstrates while teaching at LBMS are exceptional. He's an outstanding person with great integrity and a tremendous sense of personal responsibility. So congratulations.
Next up tonight is our Big Red Community Partner, McCoy's Building Supply of Belton. Producing a musical and being able to bring a story to life on stage involves much more than just the performers. While the actors are on the stage, there are dozens of students behind the scenes making sure that everything is running smoothly. Go ahead and start making your way up here, Matthew and Ken. The Belton High School Fine Arts Spring Musical Production of The Addams Family has 38 students involved in roles that range from prop design, construction, costume design, sound engineering, and light design. When we all enjoy the incredible performances of the cast of The Addams Family later this month and tonight, be sure to note that the work that has taken place behind the scenes. Costumes and sets have been built by BHS students guided by Melissa Edwards through the efforts of supportive parents like Mr. Jay Pearson here in our audience tonight, and community members such as McCoy's Building Supply of Belton, who have provided the Belton Theater Department with lumber and tools that our techies were able to use to help build an incredible multifaceted set. In recognition of this donation and their invaluable support of Belton ISD Fine Arts students, McCoy's Building Supply of Belton is this month's Big Red Community Partner, and with us tonight is Manager Matthew Poole and Sales Ken Fassalino. Thank you for being here.
I told them to stick around so they can hear the kids sing your musical.
I'm good, yeah, thank you. Well, the next one is, I'll, mine, I'll start it, and we will have some other people assist with that. Anyone come on in? All right, January is School Board Appreciation Month, and this year's theme is planting seeds of success. As committed volunteers with a passion for public education, each of you serves our taxpayers and students through your commitment to the district's mission. You provide vision and leadership in your roles and as advocates, ensuring that students are challenged to excel and reach the highest levels of achievement and success. Cultivating a culture of success is at the heart of how we collectively, how you collectively as a board tackle challenging decisions and important planning to support the district. This year, to recognize and thank you for serving our kids and our community, students from Mrs. Amy Bramlett's class, art classes at North Belton Middle School are happy to present each trustee with a beautifully designed mosaic tile stepping stone seen there in the front. They're very heavy, and please be careful, a water-colored floral painting and a copy of Ellie McKay's acclaimed picture book, If You Hold a Seed. And these books will be in all of our libraries, elementary schools in the district, and this will be the very first book that Charter Oak Elementary has in its library. There's a placard inside with all of your names on the book, and we'll give you, you can take those home and look at them and then bring them back when you're ready. It's the, they go to the kids, in your honor. It's the story of a little boy who holds a seed, makes a wish, and plants it in the ground. Over the changing seasons and passing of time, he tends to the seed with patience, love, and care, until eventually it flourishes into a full-grown tree, just as the boy grows into a full-grown man. The story explores how even the smallest dreamers can plant the seeds needed for wishes to come true. And just as the young boy in the story plants his own seed of success, this board, you all nurture and support the diverse educational needs of all children and tirelessly work to empower them to become successful learners. Tonight, we want to acknowledge each one of you, and to do that, we have eighth graders from North Belton Middle School who will assist me in presenting each one of you a gift, and I will pass the, talking to Joshua Watcher, who is one of our new communications staff members. He'll take over here, and I'll, I'll be with the kids and you.
Okay, Mr. Alcozer, would you please come forward? And Mutika Kaligiri from North Belton Middle School will assist Dr. Kincanon in giving you a special gift made by the students from North Belton. Manuel Alcozer has served as a trustee since September 2018. During a short period of time, he has shown his commitment to standing up for public education. Mr. Alcozer has deep ties to our district, attending Belton schools from kindergarten through his graduation from Belton High School. His wife Rebecca is a culinary arts teacher at Belton High School, and together, they have three children who have all attended Belton schools. He currently serves as Chair of the Advisory Committee for the Respiratory Care Program at Temple College, and was previously Vice President of Development for the Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation. He cares very deeply about generating positive change in our community and plays a significant role in planting seeds of success. Dr. Montgomery.
Please come forward. And Easton Hammond from North Belton Middle School will assist Dr. Kincanon in giving you a special gift made by the students from North Belton. Dr. Rosie Montgomery has served as a trustee since September 2018, and previously represented Area 2 on the school board from October 2010 to April 2015. Dr. Montgomery is a clinical psychologist specializing in working with children and families. She has remained an active volunteer across the district and has served as President of the PTA for Leon Heights Elementary, the Area PTA Board, the Gifted and Talented Advisory Board, and has served on the Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation Board. She also established Clipboard Buddies, a volunteer program at Chisholm Trail Elementary, where volunteers spend at least an hour each week supporting individual students with skills needed to be successful in the classroom. This program is just one example of how she has played a significant role in planting seeds of success. Mr. Flor, would you please come forward? And Riley Miller from North Belton Middle School will assist Dr. Kincanon in giving you a special gift made by the students from North Belton.
Chris Flor has served as a trustee since May 2018, and was inspired by the energy and culture of Belton ISD before moving here. He moved to Texas six years ago when the information technology company CGI asked him to run its Belton facility. He and his wife briefly lived in Round Rock before deciding that Belton ISD was exactly where they wanted to build a home. He has become closely involved in efforts to grow our district's career and technology programs by helping to design and enhance our computer science and engineering programs. Recently, he happily presented a Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation Innovative Teaching Grant for $2,500 on behalf of CGI for the creation of the North Belton Middle School Robotics Club. His passion for the STEM fields directly translates to ensuring students are prepared for the in-demand jobs of tomorrow. And it's just one way he has played a significant role in planting seeds of success. And Mr. Taggart, would you please come forward? And Maya Miller from North Belton Middle School will assist Dr. Kincanon in giving you a special gift by the students from North Belton. Ty Taggart has served as a trustee since May 2017. Whether it's cooking barbecue to help fundraise for the Magic Bells trip to California, or assisting with Friday night football games, he has continually demonstrated his strong desire to serve the community he represents. He's a proud graduate of 1989 class of Belton High School, and previously served as the president of the Athletic Booster Club. His wife Sarah, who is a second-grade teacher at Lakewood Elementary School, is also a graduate of that very same class. They have three children who have attended Belton schools. Having lived in the Belton ISD community all of his life, he has forged strong relationships with students, parents, staff, and community members. He uses those relationships to build support for the district and its initiatives. His heart is full of love for Belton ISD. When he speaks about the district and its programs and students, you know that he truly cares. He understands the meaning of community and continues playing a significant role in planting seeds of success. Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Secretary Lee, would you please come forward? And Maria Miller from North Belton Middle School will assist Dr. Kincanon in giving you a special gift made by the students from North Belton.
Janet Lee has served as a trustee since May 2017. As a former teacher at Miller Heights and Pertle Elementary Schools, she has a deep understanding of the issues impacting a student's education. She has a vision of high achievement and success for all, and asks questions in search of improving outcomes for our students and staff. She and her husband David are the parents of two Belton High School students.
She and her husband David are the parents of two Belton High School graduates. She is also an alumna of the school and was TGO during her senior year. Her active involvement in the district also included serving on the Belton ISD's Long Range Facilities Planning Committee and the Belton Educational Enrichment Foundation Board. She volunteers in the Temple Belton community as VP of Allocations for United Way of Central Texas and serves weekly at Helping Hands Ministry. She is positive, kind, and supportive of all things Belton ISD, and continues playing a significant role in planting seeds of success. Thank you, Mrs. Lee.[632.72][632.72][applause] Vice President Norwood, would you please come forward? And Rayleigh Poff from North Belton Middle School will assist Dr. Kinkanen in giving you a special gift made by the students from North Belton. Jeff Norwood has served as a member of the Belton ISD Board of Trustees for three years. He quickly established himself as a strong and respected leader and a valuable member of the board. He is a partner in an insurance agency and has lived in the Belton-Tempel area for the past 13 years. He and his wife Misty are raising two sons who attend North Belton Middle School and Belton High School. He grew up in College Station and graduated from Texas A&amp;M University. His calm demeanor and ability to thoughtfully analyze problems is a true asset to the district. He actively listens and provides meaningful feedback to ensure sound decision-making. He is truly dedicated to improving the lives of children and believes that all children can be successful learners. He serves to make the district a better place for them and continues playing a significant role in planting seeds of success. Thank you, Mr. Norwood.[707.68][707.68][applause] And President Jordan.
I'm here.
Already coming forward, thank you. And Mary Hayes from North Belton Middle School. And a big hug. Will assist Dr. Kinkanen in giving you a special gift made by students from North Belton. Sue M. Jordan has served as a member of the Belton ISD Board of Trustees for nearly six years. She was elected Board Secretary in May 2016 and was elected as Board President in August of this school year. During her time serving on the board, she has demonstrated an unwavering passion and love for the district and its students. She is a clinical application specialist at Baylor Scott &amp; White Hospital in Temple. Prior to her current position, she worked for Bell County Public Health District. She is a lifetime resident of Belton, having graduated from Belton High in 1983. She has had five children go through the Belton school system, with the fifth set to graduate next year. She has been involved in the PTA at Miller Heights Elementary and is a former PTA president. Her background in computers and her passion for learning makes it a natural fit for her to fulfill her role as a trustee. She strives to be the best board member that she can with her eagerness to continually learn new ways to help the district grow. At board conferences, she attends as many sessions as possible and shares new learning with fellow board members. She is a true representative of the community with a heart full of love and kindness and a mindset dedicated to planting seeds of success. Thank you, Ms. Jordan.[800.32][800.32][applause] And we'd like to have Amy Bramlett join us.
And Misty Simpson.
And Misty Simpson. Thank you.
Our two art teachers helped the students with these projects, and we just want to thank Amy Bramlett and Misty Simpson for assisting us. So y'all give them a round of applause.
Once again, we wish to thank all of our board members for their continual work in supporting our district.
Next up, we have public comments. I don't see anybody that signed up. Ms. Burns, thank you so much, I appreciate that.
Okay, great. We will assist those who need it with carrying those to your car this evening. Be careful, they're heavy and beautiful. Are you ready? Okay, I have just a couple of items this evening. First, I want to talk about our musical, The Addams Family, and I hope our McCoy's Big Red Community Partner stayed to see this and what the fine things that they're contributing to. The Belton ISD Fine Arts and Theater Departments, under the leadership and direction of Theater Director Melissa Stuff and Technical Director Mel Edwards, will be entertaining audiences later this month with their production of The Addams Family. This year's cast will feature our three Belton High School choir students just named to the Texas All-State Choir this weekend. Yeah.[1006.16][1006.16][applause] They'll be coming in. Kara Fish, Andrew Holcomb, and Ian Farrell. I will tell you, I had the opportunity to go down last year to TMEA and see some of the rehearsals with Allstate students in choir and band and orchestra, and it was the most phenomenal thing ever. These are truly top-notch musicians, and we couldn't be more proud of them. Showtimes for The Addams Family at the Belton High School Performing Arts Center are scheduled for January 25th and 26th at 7:00 p.m., and on Sunday, a matinee will be held on January 27th at 2:00 p.m. In addition to reserving tickets now for one of the three showtimes, I want to encourage everyone to tune into KWTX and KCEN morning shows on Tuesday and Thursday of next week as our students perform live on the early morning broadcasts. And we appreciate our communications staff for working to make that happen. We want to thank our stations for supporting our students, and also Lamar Advertising of Temple for again promoting our spring musical with digital billboards. Tonight, to perform for you, when you're an Addams, please welcome Ian Farrell as Gomez. Our, there he is, Allstate Choir. Our Morticia, Kara Fish. Katie Kemp as Wednesday. Uncle Fester, played by Andrew Holcomb, another one of our Allstate qualifier, Allstate students in choir. Hannah Odell as Pugsley. Ryan Peterson as Lurch. And Grandma, played by Kaylee Buick. That was great. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Uncle Fester, that was wonderful. Wonderful.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Wow.
That's going to be fantastic.
Our kids are so talented. Alrighty, Dr. Kinkanen, more fun stuff, 86th legislative session.
Yeah. Just wanted to mention that the 86 Texas Legislature convened last week, beginning with a session in which school finance and property tax reform will be key issues. The House elected Representative Dennis Bonin to serve as Speaker of the House. They also passed Resolution Four, the resolution that sets the parameters for how the House will conduct its business and set forth committees. One notable change there is that the House Public Education Committee will increase from 11 to 13 members. The Senate also adopted a resolution for how it will conduct business during the session and added a new committee of five members that will focus on property taxes. The Education Committee will continue to have 11 members. Senator Kirk Watson will serve as the Senate President, co-tem, and this means that he will preside over the Senate chamber when Lieutenant Governor Dan Patrick is unavailable, and he will be in line for succession for the governor.
Could you just hold me? Thank you. It is unclear at this time when Patrick will make Senate Committee recommendations. Both the House and the Senate will reconvene tomorrow, and there will be a joint session to inaugurate the governor. As with every session, we do expect the usual issues for school districts, accountability and assessment, school finance, and vouchers. We also expect continued conversation regarding professional ethics. We talked a lot about Senate Bill Seven in the last session. And charter school partnerships, including Senate Bill 1882, as well as instructional materials and technology. We don't anticipate any changes with the A through F ratings, although there certainly needed changes, in my opinion, to address the complexity of the system and its correlation with poverty. School safety will also be a topic of debate as well during this session, and we don't know yet, no, where that will lead in terms of requirements from the state or any funding to implement any kinds of new requirements or any grant funding. Also, there will be plenty of debate and conversation regarding special education. That's been a topic of great conversation in the state of Texas for the last several years. We will keep an open mind. We'll contribute when we can and where we can, and we intend to stay connected with our elected officials who understand our needs here locally. Next week, I believe, we will begin our weekly superintendent conference calls with Representative Hugh Shine. That's something he started during the last legislative session that was very beneficial to all of our local superintendents. We really appreciate the way in which he communicates with us regularly and keeps us informed, and we look forward to continuing a strong relationship with him during this session. So we're off and rolling for this legislative session. So that's all I have, our superintendents' report.
Thank you, Dr. Kinkanen. Next up, Dr. Rochelle Warren is going to review and discuss campus culture spotlight at Belton New Tech and Miller Heights Elementary. Hello, Dr. Warren, how are you?
Well, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So we are off and running again with some of the great work that our campuses are doing, and this evening, we will focus on Belton New Tech. And Miller Heights Elementary is going to make a repeat appearance, highlighting their compassionate response to the recent tragedy. So we start like we always do with the numbers. So this is what Belton New Tech looks like by our demographics. Excuse me. So the approach to this particular goal, this particular priority, that Mr. Smith and his staff follow, really can be best illustrated through their commitment to servant leadership. So Senior Noah Whitworth, who you all might recognize from his previous recognition last fall for a cybersecurity project that was focusing on online safety. Representative John Carter arranged for formal recognition from the Department of Homeland Security Assistant Chief Robert Schroeder. This project started innocently enough. It was an assignment, an opportunity to explore in depth a particular area of interest for the students, and Noah's just kept growing. And Mr. Smith said that this project, as many other projects on campus do, really exemplifies how students apply the campus values of trust, respect, and responsibility, which have been in place from the campus's creation. He said, "Students know we trust in them to interact with others in a positive and productive way. By participating in Purple Heart Servant Leadership Day, students develop a respect for others and their various needs. Further, there is great value in taking on the responsibility of helping others." As a result of this culture, all Belton New Tech students have the opportunity for their projects to impact others well beyond their campus. Additionally, every December, students participate in Purple Heart Servant Leadership Day to honor their namesake, his dedication to serving others, while also providing students with an opportunity to experience how their kindness and goodwill can positively impact the community. Last year, December 17th, 2018, students, staff, parents, and soldiers from their adopted school sponsor continued this tradition by participating in 19 service projects throughout the community. The goal for events like this is to have a lasting... The goal for events like this is to have a lasting impact on how students treat each others throughout their lives. Mr. Smith said, "We want them to develop an intrinsic desire to help others, not because they have to, but because it is who they are as a person." For Miller Heights, in the midst of difficulty, they lost, we lost, a PE teacher, Shelley Splitgerber, known as Coach S, recently. To ensure appropriate care of students and staff, a crisis response plan was enacted right away. So planning happened from the moment of notice. Staff was contacted immediately by their principal and we had a team on site beginning January seventh. Student support included a safe room that was staffed by two counselors and stocked with a variety of activities and materials to help students manage their grief. All classes cycled through the gym to receive the announcement directly from Mrs. Connor. This was following a general acknowledgement that had been made during morning announcements. In addition, every teacher had a prepared statement to share with their class to set the tone for that day. While in the gym, students participated in a reflection activity and self-regulating breathing exercises led by Counselor Manera Tarver. But by far, the biggest hit was golden rule therapy dogs. And as you can see in these pictures, the dogs were there to assist students with their ability to process their feelings without necessarily having to use words. As students shared memories of Coach S in their class circles, the therapy dogs and their student handlers, a mixture of college and high school students, patiently worked the room. Students and adults visibly relaxed at the side of the dogs. The entire Miller Heights family enjoyed this unexpected addition to the crisis response plan facilitated by Board Member Mr. Flor and his wife, one of the many Belton ISD staff members who lovingly supported the campus. One student, however, was disappointed to find out that the dogs were not permanent members of the Miller Heights family. Additionally, the elementary counselors demonstrated admirable leadership and collaboration during this crisis moment. Counselors Megan Cannon from Lakewood, who you see on the left there, Shannon Harmsen from Sparta and Mary Lehrer from Chisholm Trail collaborated with Manera Tarver to ensure students and staff had appropriate support. The three extra counselors were on site January seventh through the ninth, with the bulk of their response happening on the first full day back for students. Using Kim Christie Anderson's outline as a launching point, these four created warm, comforting, safe spaces. The individual strengths of each counselor knitted together beautifully to form an interconnected whole group effort. Afterwards, all nine elementary counselors debriefed to identify components that could be incorporated into regular practice. So don't be surprised if we have pillow ponds on all of our elementaries. And definitely ask to find out what those pillow ponds are about. These activities, these stories demonstrate the varied ways that our campuses are actively engaging all members of the BISD community in efforts to create safe, inclusive learning environments for our students. It also demonstrates the tremendous value that we place on our community for students and staff and how they demonstrate it regularly. Any questions?
No questions, just a comment. Just really appreciate the way BISD has responded to this particular crisis moment. It just goes to show how we are so much more concerned than just teaching the child. We want to make sure they're whole, one hundred percent, really appreciate you and your staff for doing that. And it just almost makes me want to cry because we are such a good school district. Thank you all so much for doing that.
Please, at the last semester, we received invitations to go watch a presentation at New Tech. And one afternoon, I went over there towards the end of the semester and watched the students in the presentation. Stayed there for a little over an hour, got to see the passing between classes twice. Got to visit with several of the students and I'd never been there before. Wow. Ben, just amazing. And the culture that Deanna and Jill were there before, I was blown away. And thank you all so much. That is a really neat thing that we have in Belton ISD. I wanted to recognize you guys for what y'all have going over there. It was awesome.
Thank you for that. I just want to tell you how proud we are of the staff of Miller Heights. Jennifer Connor did an amazing job. I got to spend a little bit of time out there on the Monday back as she talked to her staff, she and our counselors, and just truly amazing. And then was able to go back the next day as she talked to children. And staff was remarkable. Counselors were fantastic. Manera, you see in the picture on the right, is the Elementary Counselor of the Year for Region Twelve. There's a very good reason for that. She did a beautiful job with the children. And then, of course, the dogs were amazing. If you go back a picture, there was a picture that I took that I really love, this picture on the left. And I love that because the dog is right up against the child. And even when the child's not looking, but that dog knows what her job is, to nurture and love. And I just, I thought that was so special. But it was, it was something, it was really. So thank you, Rochelle. I know Rochelle had a big part in helping Elizabeth in the communications of the district and Kim Christie Anderson in helping develop a plan for our staff and students upon their return. So you would have been very proud of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next up, we're going to consider, discuss and take appropriate action regarding elementary, middle school and high school attendance boundaries. Dr. Kinkanen.
You all bear with me. I am struggling a little bit with something, whether that's an allergies or a cold, but I may need to take a drink as I go. Tonight, we want to make a recommendation to you regarding attendance boundaries for elementary, middle and high school for the district. This is something we've been working on for a while. We've worked closely with our demographers, Templeton demographics. We've had a citizens committee meet with parents, community members, teachers and administrators to study the school district's geographic areas. And I think it's significant that we addressed three attendance boundary maps at the same time, elementary, middle and high school. That's something that we've never done. And I think it worked beautifully. Even though we're not opening our middle school and our high school until the fall of 2020, it was important that we see how all of the pieces fit together. And so tonight, we'll be asking you to adopt all three maps, although we will only be implementing the elementary map in the fall of 2019. So this will be a transition process for us. As you know, there were five map sets that were considered. Those were narrowed down to two. And then we held some public forums. We added some information in the public forums to address an issue brought forward to us by the staff regarding the Southwest Elementary students and their middle school attendance zone. And ultimately, we're recommending that students residing in the Southwest Elementary zone be zoned for Belton Middle School as their middle school campus. And Miller Heights students would then be zoned to Belt Middle, I said that backwards. Southwest students will go to South Belton Middle School and Miller Heights students will go to Belton Middle School. And there were two issues that were really the focus, that became the focus of the work. One was whether or not the Lakewood students residing in the hook, which is what we called the Lakewood Hook, which is the area along FM four thirty-nine, that in each of the map sets was zoned one direction or the other, being south in Map Set A and north in Map Set E. And so that was one of the big topics of conversation. The other was the Southwest Elementary zoning for middle school. So we've provided opportunity to review, for the board to review feedback from the forums. You all have had the opportunity to discuss attendance boundaries at your monthly workshop meetings throughout the entire process. And then in December, we shared those alternative options with you for the middle school, Southwest Elementary concern. And tonight, we would like to recommend the maps that are in your packet, which are essentially Map Set A, that have the hook going to the south. And again, addresses the Southwest Elementary concern. These maps provide attendance boundaries that will last for five years. They keep subdivisions together to the greatest extent possible. They make efficient use of our buildings to reduce overcrowding. They facilitate the most efficient transportation routes. They use natural attendance boundary lines to the greatest extent possible. They establish pure feeder patterns from middle school to high school, which was a priority for the board and one of the highest priorities for the committee when we looked at the thought, we used the thought exchange program to share ideas. And these maps keep seven of our nine existing elementary schools together at middle school. In fact, we're only moving approximately fifteen percent of our elementary population. And like any time you go through this process, any time you do a rezoning process, you're not going to completely satisfy everyone and meet everyone's individual desires regarding where those lines are drawn. And they don't completely satisfy all of the priorities that we identified at the onset, but they do address them to the greatest extent possible, given our unique district that we have with the unique geographic characteristics that we have, the location and size of our facilities. And we have been very pleased with the process. And tonight, we would propose the attendance boundary maps, which we've provided in your packet for elementary, middle school and high school as presented.
Any discussion?
Okay, just to recap, which elementaries at this point with this recommendation are split?
I have that in our transfer presentation, so let me find that for you. There are a good number of, that are split from elementary to middle school. That is Pearl Elementary and Lakewood Elementary.
Not Charter Oak?
Charter Oak is also split, I believe, but I'm looking to my team to help me.
It looks to me on the map.
Yeah, Charter Oak should be the third one. So two existing and the new campus.
Any further discussion on that?
Yes, Dr. Kinkanen, you were mentioning the efficient use. And then you mentioned the transfer routes. There's an economic impact with all of this. If we go a different route, not only the efficient use, but there's going to be an economic impact overall for the district because we're going to have to, if we go a different route, the mileage is essentially doubled, is it not, for the route?
Yeah, so the difference between going south and north is approximately double in terms of mileage. In terms of efficiency, it depends on the day and the traffic flow patterns that you see. There are a number of red lights that a parent or student would travel through if they traveled north versus south. And so the efficiency is not only economic, but it's in time. And not just time to drive, but also time to make connections for bus routes. So with the implementation of our three-tier bus routing system that we moved to this year, we have an elementary, middle and a high school route. So your drivers will run a route and then they will go back and run the next level of route. And so time becomes an important consideration in making those connections for our students.
Now, I don't know if you can do it at this point in your presentation, but there was some concern expressed by some of the folks that are in the hook about wanting to go an alternative plan. Now, if we implement this, if we accept this plan as proposed, there's going to be some opportunity for these folks that have this concern to stay in that same area that they're in. However, there will be a transportation issue, will there not?
Yes, so after you take action on this item, I have a presentation for you on the transition to these new attendance boundaries, which takes into consideration transfers and the opportunity for parents to ask for those transfers early so that we can have numbers as we move forward in the planning process. And so I will outline that for you. Transportation is not ever, is not ever offered in the district. When we do accept or approve a transfer from one campus to another, an district transfer, and you will hear me say that is my recommendation again. We have been as accommodating as we can in the past with transfers. So what I would propose doing is, and I'll share this again in the next presentation, but outline a timeline and a process for the community. And then we would take all of an elementary set of requests, all of a middle school set of requests, all of a high school set of requests, and consider those as a transition to these new boundaries. And that gives us the opportunity to evaluate how many we have, what are the reasons people are asking to transfer, what's the impact to our staffing? And to determine what we can and can't do. And so I'll lay out some of what we think are priorities for you. And certainly, there's an opportunity for people in the hook to transfer and to make a request to transfer and for us to review that request. And those would, you know, if those are doable, then that's something that we're committed to doing.
Any idea currently, even if it's a round number, how many students do ride the bus in that hook?
Yes, I don't remember the specific number of students on those bus routes, but we have six buses, three regular ed and three special education buses for that particular area. So that would be a good number of riders from that area in the hook.
I think the thing about the transfer policy that's going to be different for us going forward will be the high school kids because of UIL eligibility concerns. You can't get mad at something and say, "Well, I'm going here and then go there and come back." There's going to be guidelines set by the state, UIL, that will dictate some of those, I think, decisions in the plan, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll be more cautious on high school transfers than perhaps elementary and middle school because of those UIL eligibility concerns. And we certainly don't want, you know, we want to make sure that guidelines are clear and that there isn't a chance to kind of manipulate the system, particularly whereas athletics are concerned. So this would be new territory for us, as we've always just had the one high school attendance zone. And so we will work on that transition process and communication to our families and students.
I just want to point out that when you do a boundary process, it's very easy to go into those meetings with one thing that's very near and dear to your heart. And so first, I just want to commend you guys for all the steps that you took to make sure that everybody had an opportunity for input. But I think that something that maybe didn't get highlighted tonight that needs to be highlighted is that sometimes a point that may be near and dear to your heart, when you work everything out, that's not the number one issue. But what doesn't get stated is that you guys, as an administration, you continue to take into account what each school will need and what each student will need. So I hope that as people think about the boundary process, they know that you have the educational, emotional and social needs of the kids in place. And I just wanted to be sure.
Thank you for that. We spent a significant amount of time as a team talking through everything we heard, planning for those meetings, working side by side with our demographers to develop the process and implement a process to get to the point that we're at today. So thank you for that.
I'm still having a little bit of heartburn around splitting up the hook, right? And so can you remind us of some of the reasons why we can't take the hook and move it to so can you remind us of some of the reasons why we can't take the hook and move it to Sparta Elementary instead of keeping it in Lakewood?
Sure. So if you think about all of the district's elementary schools in Belton ISD, we have our smallest capacity facilities in the south. And if you'll recall, listening to the demographers talking about the north and the southern, northern and southern parts of Belton ISD, we're pretty equally distributed, north and south, but we don't have, we have smaller facilities because of the age of the facilities in the south. So we don't have as much capacity in the south during the last, I believe it was during the last attendance rezoning process, we weren't able to accommodate students in the hook going south because of capacity concerns. And so in this case, this particular area is impacted once again by just pure capacity of buildings. So we could push more kids further south, but that would have us do some things that we don't want to do, such as adding portable buildings to accommodate increased enrollment and perhaps maybe moving some programs. We did talk about moving some programs, and we haven't made any decisions on those, but it's primarily capacity issue. Yeah. And then you'll remember, Three Creeks is growing fast, and that's a stressor on the south, a stressor on Chisholm Trail Elementary. And so you have, you know, you have pressure points south, and you have pressure points north. We built a new school in the middle, which was beneficial in helping us to change these boundaries in such a way that we didn't have to make huge drastic shifts. So we're shifting slightly in different areas. But we'll have an opportunity in the future as we add new schools, depending on where the board opts to build those to address the hook for the elementary level. So that's a future item that we can address when we add the next elementary school, if you choose to do so. Location of schools is the board's decision.
I mean, I think the reason for my discomfort around that split is just the sheer number of students impacted by the split, right? I mean, I think if Lakewood is a 50-50 split, where 50% of them go one way and 50% of them go another, right, and you kind of look at the support system for the child, you're in like their friends' network, right? You know, that kind of goes 50-50. Now, I can tell you from my own daughter, the students she was in elementary with, you know, she doesn't tax to half of them now, right? So I don't know how that holds up. But, you know, I think where I get twisted is it's such a small number of students, you know, sort of proportionately, you know, going to the south and such a larger number of Lakewood going north. That's where I get wrapped up.
And I think that's where, Chris, the transfer application process can help. And we will have an opportunity to evaluate those as we move forward. Yeah.
I just want to say, this has been a process. We've had meetings and meetings and meetings and meetings. The thing that I appreciate about making this decision tonight is I'm pleased and at peace in my mind with the recommendation because we've gone over every possible scenario. And Templeton was wonderful, being able to punch in numbers and move things around. And the way that this was brought to the public, the information that's been out there on the website, the opportunity for anybody and everybody to come to these meetings was always there. And I think y'all covered every, everything. It was very thorough. And I do appreciate what y'all have done here. Y'all left no stone unturned. Feel very comfortable with the process.
Thank you very much.
Every former board member that I've visited with has sat through a process like this in the past. Rosie, you were probably one of them in the past, said that this is not easy. And I will say that if, I wouldn't say it was easy, but I would say that with Templeton demographics help, it made it so much clearer to people. I mean, there was very little way to argue with what you saw when they would just shift that neighborhood over here, and suddenly, here's your new demographics, here's your makeup, here's your population, how many kids, and how are you going to argue with that? It's math. And so it just made it very clear. Now, these little tweaks, this is definitely where we are now. And I feel like, I feel like we've come to a pretty fair compromise at this point. And there, again, like Ty said, ample opportunity for people to come and give their input and see for themselves, too.
And it was taken to heart.
Yeah.
They made some changes. And after the maps, the two maps were narrowed down, those public forums did make a difference.
Yes, they did.
Okay, any further discussion?
I mean, I would say regardless of how, you know, how this turns out, I'm really honored to be in this seat and to have gone through the process with everybody and the community members and my fellow board members. You know, I can't echo enough what you just said, Janet. You know, I think we put a lot of heart into this thing. And whatever comes out of this, we've got an amazing school district. Doesn't matter where the line is drawn. And so, you know, again, thank you for the way that we run the process.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I would just echo what each of the team here has said. It certainly has been a process. And as you all can tell from the discussion, a lot of hearts involved here. And this was not anything that was done lightly. This is something that was very thorough. Just really appreciate your team and the Templeton team, just everyone involved in the community, especially, all of their input. If there is no further discussion, we're going to--
I just want to make one comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Dr. Kinkanen, just, I want folks to understand that, especially those folks that had a concern about splitting the hook, those parents that are in that region, they need to understand that it's not over with. You still have an opportunity to apply for a transfer to keep your kid where you want your kid to go to school, albeit the transfer, there's a transportation issue with that. But, I mean, when my kid was at Sparta, I mean, there's a bunch of folks that drive their kids to school. So the folks need to understand that if we go with the recommendation of the administration, that doesn't mean that your kid's going to be stuck, you know, with that. You have an opportunity to request a transfer so that we can accommodate those wishes. And historically, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, historically, the district has done a good job in making an effort to accommodate those requests.
Our goal has always been to make the transition as easy as possible. And so we will, you know, I will hedge a little bit and say I want to be able to evaluate what I have before we make final decisions and commit to saying yes. But we have done the best we can in the past to accommodate people, especially those directly impacted during the time of transition.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the recommendation as presented and proposed by the administration to go with maps at A. Is there a motion to approve? Thank you, Mr. Taggart. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Norwood. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Okay, that is six all opposed. So we have six in favor, one opposed. Thank you all so much. Again, thank you. I would remind the board that although it's our duty to set those boundaries, it is the administration's obligation to enjoy, to go ahead and implement the boundaries and to implement the process. So we'll be looking to Dr. Kinkanen and her team to make this happen. And I'm sure she's about to tell us how that's going to happen.
Okay, well, let's do that. Let's transfer, transition to the proposed transfer process that the administration has been working on. So now that we have attendance boundaries, I want to walk you through transfers in general and what we might do as a part of a transition with the implementation of new attendance boundaries. So like Sue said, ultimately, the board does set the attendance boundaries. And by policy, the administration is charged with implementing those new boundaries. There are two kinds of transfers by policy. First, there are intra-district transfers, and those are transfers from one campus to another in Belton ISD. They're governed by policy FDB local, and that policy provides that the superintendent oversees the intra-district transfer process. Some things that, factors that are outlined in the policy for consideration of transfer approvals or denials are availability of space, hardships, family hardships, special programs, and student disciplinary and attendance records when moving from one school to another as a resident. And then a resident student who becomes a non-resident is allowed to continue in attendance for the remainder of the semester that they're in. So if you were to move out of the district's boundaries, we would not boot you out. We would allow you to stay and finish the semester. Inter-district transfers are those transfers from outside of the district, meaning that students do not reside within the Belton ISD boundaries. That policy is governed by FDA local. Again, it provides that the superintendent or her designee manages the approval process. Robert Atmar is in charge of managing our transfer process currently in Belton ISD. When intra-district transfers are approved, they're approved for one year only, and an application does have to be made each school year. Factors that we consider in that approval process includes, again, availability of space, staffing, the student's disciplinary history, and again, attendance records. So here's what we propose to do. On January the 25th, at the end, I believe that's the end of next week, we plan to send a letter to the parent of every elementary student in the district, asking that parents verify their child's enrollment and campus location for the 2019-2020 school year. So while there are special issues with high school, there are special issues with elementary school because we're bound by the Texas Education Code's requirement that we have 22:1 class sizes for students in K4. So it becomes very critical that we know as close as possible how many students will be attending at each grade level so that we can provide appropriate staffing to meet that requirement. Students who were previously approved, introduced, intra-district transfers are automatically renewed, provided that we have space and that there are no concerns with discipline and attendance. We do intend to continue that practice. Pending space available, of course, with the implementation of our new attendance boundaries. And parents do have to complete a transfer application for consideration. When that letter goes out on the 25th, parents will be notified that new requests will be considered. Any parent can make a transfer request. And as a part of the transition to new boundaries, we're asking that parents submit an application between February the 4th and the 22nd. And I'll speak to that a little bit more in a couple of slides. Again, transportation for transfer students is not provided. So having that deadline gives us the ability to begin to work on staffing for our elementary schools. So that's important for us. Okay. I think I've previously told you this, but I just want to repeat this again. It's good information. 3.6% of our students are currently out-of-district transfer students. The district has had approximately 4% or less for many years. And this year was actually smaller in terms of percent of total student body than last year. Actually told Mr. Atmar this summer, "You keep me posted. I want to know," because I don't want to exceed our averages. We're watching that very closely. And we were actually down to 3.6% this year. There are 425 out-of-district transfers, and of those, approximately 204 are employee children. So we aren't talking about a large number of students. On the screen, you can see the fees associated for Belton ISD for out-of-district transfers. Mr. Atmar did conduct a review, as I mentioned, at the last meeting with the Committee of Current Practices in other districts. And that was pretty interesting. Academy, Georgetown, Round Rock, Leander, and Salado are currently not accepting transfers into their districts. However, Salado does have some exceptions. They accept transfers for active military dependents, and they have some grandfathering in place for residents who move out of the district. And they have not charged for out-of-district students in about six years, according to their superintendent. Academy ISD reports that they currently don't accept transfers, but should they begin to accept out-of-district transfers again, they would charge a fee of $600 per student with an additional $300 per sibling. Colleen, Temple, and Waco do accept transfers, and there is no fee for transfer students in those districts. Midway accepts transfers, and they charge $500 per student per semester, regardless of the grade level. So I, after looking at that data, I really feel like you're in a good place with your transfer practices and your fees. And I wouldn't have any recommendations for you, although sometimes I have a hard time remembering when someone asks me how much it is for the second or third child. But I think you're in a really good spot. Our current practice has been to send out-of-district middle school transfers to South Belton Middle School. We did that originally when we went through the very first transfer application request process, when we changed attendance boundaries. And the reason we did that was to provide a more balanced number of economically disadvantaged students at South Belton Middle School, and then to ensure equity in terms of size from one middle school campus to another. And we, and obviously, we didn't want to overload our schools in the north. So once we evaluate all of the requests that we receive, we will make some decisions about whether or not we will limit transfers to specific campuses or not. So I think I mentioned that also at the meeting, that it is possible that we might want to do that. But we won't know until we, again, until we see what kinds of requests we get. And again, transportation is not provided for transfer students. We're excited about the opening of Charter Oak Elementary. And as you heard earlier from our architects, the school will be complete in a very short time. It's projected to be completed by the end of March. So those new boundaries will be implemented in just seven months. So that's coming pretty quickly. There you can see Jennifer in front of the We have a good number of schools who have revised attendance boundaries. Many of those have a very minor shift in some of the borders of their attendance boundaries. And in fact, again, only about 15% of our elementary students are impacted by changing from one attendance boundary to another. That's worth noting. Again, we'll communicate to parents regarding new attendance boundaries and the timeline to transfer for those applications to be accepted on the next slide, please. And it's our intention to make decisions regarding those elementary transfers and the placement of special programs as quickly as possible. We want to be able to notify parents by April the 1st. And again, we'll be accepting transfer requests for elementary from February the 4th through the 22nd. Some other considerations, transportation will not be provided for approved transfers. You might hear me say that a few times. We, again, will look at the impact of all of the requests that we get as we transition. And if possible, we would like to give priority to the oldest returning students at a campus. However, we wouldn't accommodate an entire grade level returning to a school. So we generally expect that people are going to go to the new attendance boundaries, and then there will be some requests from parents to not do that. But generally, students go, they go together. That makes it easier for them to adapt to the new change. And then finally, we will give special consideration to students in special programs and siblings. Sometimes you have a student who's in a special program, and they have a sibling that they want to have come join them. These are the special programs that we have at the elementary school level. We don't have staff for every single one of these programs at every campus, so we do have to move students to where programs are located. And when that happens, we do provide transportation for those impacted students. So that's elementary process. Any questions about elementary transfer application process?
So when you're going through a couple of slides back, you said, at least for middle school currently, we've been feeding into South Belton. Is there, has there been a similar pattern at the elementary school level where we're feeding them to specific schools, or?
No, we haven't closed off-- No, we haven't closed off any one particular school in a hard way like we did with middle school. But we do have to cut off enrollment at certain grade levels at campuses. So if you request to go to Sparta Elementary first grade, and you're coming from another campus and there's no space, then that would be a no. What else would I add to that? We have shifted students when there's overcrowding at the elementary. So typically, at the beginning of the school year, we will look at our counts for every homeroom section, and when we exceed the 22 to 1, we will either move students to an available space at another campus, or we will sometimes move a teacher if we need to, to open a section, or even hire a teacher to open a section at a school where we have more students than expected. So we make those adjustments as we go. This year, this past year, Sparta, maybe even longer, Sparta has been kind of the, has been the overcrowding, not overcrowded, the school that has received transfers because of overcrowding at Chisholm Trail Elementary, and typically because of capacity issues, Leon Heights Elementary, we always have a few students that we need to move because of the campus is too small for the attendance boundaries. All right, middle school. This process is pretty similar to elementary. However, we don't have to implement new attendance boundaries for the middle school until the fall of 2020. So we plan to open transfer requests specific for middle school beginning in October. So we will, we will go ahead and notify, the goal would be to notify parents of approval or denial for their middle school transfer request by January the 10th of 2020. So students will continue in their attendance, current attendance boundary. They'll come back in the fall and start school. We'll communicate to parents that that application process is open, and we will take those this fall. Transportation is not provided for approved transfers, again, for middle school. Again, we want to take a look at the prior, oldest returning students to a campus with the expectation that students generally move to their new attendance boundary. We'll look at siblings, we'll look at special programs. And then we'll take a look again at out-of-district transfers and determine whether or not we need to close those off at specific schools. And we may need to do that, again, with the growth that we're experiencing in some parts of the district. So we'll, we'll be following that closely. When you get to high school, it gets a little bit hairier, and those attendance boundaries will not take place until the fall, fall of 2020, when Lake Belton High School opens. So we have a little additional time to plan, and I will tell you we need it. As an administrative team, we've been on a journey since 2013, moving towards the opening of a new high school. There've been a lot of decisions to make, and we have, we have done a lot, but we have a long way to go, so to speak. So here are some of the considerations that we've discussed for high school. I want you to know that it's important to us that next year, that our ninth graders understand that they're Belton High School students next year. We want them to be a cohesive student body. We want them to be on the same team, no matter what programs they're participating in, whether that be an athletic team or any of our other programs such as band, theater, or choir, or any other programs. We want, we don't want a lot of jockeying for positions and moves. So it will be important to our principals that we stay cohesive next year. So we will soon be posting and naming a principal for Lake Belton High School, and we'll be asking that the Belton High School, Lake Belton High School, and New Tech High School principals all work together to make this a smooth transition for the district. And we will ask that they insist that all of our high school staff members understand and support the transition process that we've developed as we move forward. Our new principal will be on board a year in advance at Lake Belton High School, and they will be assisting with the transition. There's an opportunity for student input into the new campus, so they can pull focus groups of students who will be going to Lake Belton High School and begin to work on culture and processes and programs for the new school. They'll be working through the staffing process with our Human Resources Department and establishing systems and processes for a new campus. And then they will also be working closely with the Belton High School principal, just to ensure that we have a smooth school year there next year. Like Mr. Taggart mentioned, at the high school level, UIL eligibility rules come into play. And so it's important that we help our students and their parents understand the commitment that they're making as ninth graders. And UIL eligibility rules state that a student must be a resident of the district and the high school attendance zone for which they're participating. Students transferring from one school to another for a program that's not offered at their home campus must do so at their first available opportunity. And so that would be ninth graders for current Belton ISD students, or the point of enrollment for students who are new to the district. And then out-of-district transfer students must be continuously enrolled one calendar year to become eligible for varsity athletics. And then, of course, students changing schools for athletic purposes may be declared ineligible for more than one calendar year. So the UIL frequently reviews any violations that are reported in that regard. So we want to make sure that parents and students understand all of those rules, because this is new to our community in terms of multiple attendance boundaries. And then you need to know that we will submit our projected enrollment for UIL purposes in October of 2019. And those are the numbers that will be used to identify our UIL classification. So it was important to us that we be able to provide some pretty accurate projections as we get closer to October. For New Tech High School, we'll continue our usual spring registration process, and our principal, Ben Smith, will be meeting with eighth graders at each middle school campus, as he always does. He's going to communicate the new attendance boundaries, the transition to new schools. He will explain the UIL eligibility rules and the commitment that students need to make. And then we are committed to providing transportation for New Tech students residing within the district's boundaries, and we want students to know that when they register this spring for New Tech. We don't know the logistics of that when we open Lake Belton High School, but we will make sure that kids get from home to school. And this year, just as a note, New Tech will accept their applications. Their event will be held on Saturday, April the 27th. Excuse me. So this is preregistration season. It's the time of the year that we always begin to prepare our eighth graders for high school. And so using our normal parent meeting process, we will provide information to parents about the opening of Lake Belton High School and what they can expect over the next year and a half as we move toward the opening of Lake Belton High School in the fall of 2020, which is, by the way, only 19 months away. It's coming fast, really fast. So with that in mind, we've scheduled parent meetings for February the 12th, the 20th, and the 21, 21st at Belton High School. We'll communicate those dates out to our parents to help with preregistration for next year. Some of the things we'd like to talk about with parents is some proposed topics. And we know that right now, we can't answer every single question that they might have about all the various programs at the high school level. But we want to give some general information this spring about the opening of the new school. Again, we want to talk about UIL, why it's important that students make that commitment. We will tell them about decisions that have been made regarding programs that won't be duplicated at both high schools. We will communicate which programs that will provide busing for from one campus to another, and we'll provide information regarding endorsements, graduation plans, credit, still credit, pre-AP and AP courses, just as we always do at this time of the year. All right, I'm getting close. We know there are a lot of questions regarding the opening of the new high school, and that's why we plan to hold a parent meeting, again, in the fall, just after school starts next school year. And any interested parent of a high school student will be able to attend. That will be prior to us opening a transfer application process for high school, which will be September 17th through October the 5th, with parent notification occurring by January the 10th of 2020. Parents, transportation will not be provided for transfers again, and we just want the opportunity to be able to communicate and answer questions with parents, any questions that they have this fall as we get closer to that opening. All right. So this has been a journey, as I said. We've been thinking about this new high school since 2013. I certainly have. We've been slow, we've been methodical, we've been thoughtful, we've been making decisions and incrementally working our way through each piece of the process. Thus, the, "When eating an elephant, take one bite at a time," because it is, it's a big project. So I think that quote's quite appropriate. I'd just like to end by mentioning that we have developed a set of frequently asked questions for the public, and we can continue to add to those over the course of the next year and a half, or as we transition to new schools. And so we have a new webpage that will go live tomorrow. It's called www.bisd.net/Enroll, N-B-I-S-D. And that's where the attendance boundary maps will live. That's where parents can find this presentation, information about transfers, the applications, anything they need to know about this change. And appreciate Elizabeth and her team working on that.
Susan, real quick question on that particularly. One of the questions I get quite often is when, and this is a good one for you, Deanna, when the GPA changes will take place. I get that quite a lot. So if that's not on there, it probably is, but that's one that needs to be included in the frequently asked questions.
We'll be communicating information out about GPA changes next week. So I will forward the letter that we intend to send home to parents to the board this week so that you can see that. But we will get a lot of questions. That will be a topic of discussion for a while. So appreciate you bringing that up.
I've got one quick question. We're going to hire the high school principal about a year out. What's the timeline for the new football coach?
Todd and I have talked about that. Todd, do you remember? Todd's ready. Like, I keep slowing him down, because I just mentally, I'm not there.
I'm not sure where we are in the elephant right now. This question may be like where the hippie is.
Okay, so that's funny, because that's what I tell my team. Right? We're not on that piece of the elephant right now.
People ask all the time about this, because I know they got to put together a staff and all that stuff.
So they'll be here for spring practice. Again, though, we are still working our way through the process. We know Todd has a projected staffing plan and projected positions, and we're, we'll be evaluating that as we move forward.
I've also gotten a couple of questions about how New Tech is going to work in the two-high-school system, right? So could we get a quick recap reminder?
Yeah, good question, and we will probably get that question a lot, too. I think that's in the FAQ already. But we talked a lot about New Tech High School when we convened our Long Range Facilities Planning Committee. We opened that campus in the fall of 2011. That's been an important campus in Belton ISD. It's been well-received by students and parents, and so the feeling was that we want that to not be disrupted, right? And so we do have to share a campus code with Belton High School, thus the GPA merger. And we'll begin that first communication of that next week. Actually, though, we did have a policy committee that looked at EIC Local that Deanna Love Smith led. Was that this year, Deanna? It was this year, time gets by. And so we've been making, taking some steps forward in making that transition. But we expect that students will be able to choose Belton New Tech High School at WASCO, as they've done in the past. They'll be able to access extracurricular activities at Belton High School. If they live in the Lake Belton High School zone, then they would be, you know, they would be choosing an attendance boundary at the first available opportunity. And so those UIL eligibility rules will begin to kick in should they change their mind. So it will be important that we help students understand that change in our district. It won't be as easy to move in and out of programs.
Thank you for asking that. I, too, have had that question asked of me about New Tech, so thank you, Dr.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Responding to that. I believe we're ready to move on.
Yeah.
Yes, it's the presenter, Dr. Kim Canning.
I have the next one as well.
She's going to give us an update on our safety and security elements.
I thought, we talked about this this summer, and I thought with the legislative session beginning that you would like an update, and some of you were not on the board in July when I originally gave this presentation. So if you'll bear with me, what I want to do is give you a review of what we talked about in July and tell you about the work that's been done since July. So in July, we discussed school safety, which was a topic of great conversation across the state and the nation since the school shootings that occurred last year. And again, thank you. That's a topic that will be discussed at great length during this legislative session. So tonight, I want to tell you what we've accomplished over the last several months regarding our comprehensive safety and security elements. But first, I wanted to tell you why, and that's why, that little guy right there. That's what it's all about, our kids, and their safety and well-being is our highest priority, and we want to continue to keep them and our employees at the forefront of our decisions regarding safety and security planning. So just a little bit of review here for the benefit of those who are new to the board. Each spring, Deanna mentioned our district improvement plan, but each spring, the board guides the beginnings of the development of a district improvement plan by adopting goals for the upcoming school year. Once those goals are identified, typically in April, the administration begins to develop strategies and activities to meet the goals. And then the plan that's developed serves as a blueprint for the work that we do each year. One of the board's goals is a goal four. It states that Belton ISD will sustain a safe and supportive environment to provide a secure, nurturing, non-threatening, respectful, and disciplined learning environment where all members excel and exhibit moral excellence. And that goal has been in place for a good number of years. We spent some extra time last summer examining the goal, the strategies and activities, and really spent a lot of time delineating those in the plan. We reviewed those with DEWEC, and then in August, we presented a district improvement plan to the board with those plans in it. So we do take planning seriously in Belton ISD, and we have worked hard. We worked diligently as a team to implement the plan that we bring you each year in August to adopt. And so you're going to recognize some of the information that I present, will present because you've heard it before. But like any plan, it's a living document, so we do make adjustments along the way as we get new information and things change. So you will recognize some, you may recognize that some things have emerged or expanded in our approach. As we prepared our district improvement plan for this year, we reflected on our efforts to enhance safety and security and to provide for the well-being of our students. We examined what we'd been doing, how we wanted to improve. We categorized everything regarding school safety in Belton ISD into into five categories that we call our comprehensive safety and security. And those elements are facilities and devices, human resources and partnerships, communication, training, and then most important of all, students, our big element in safety and security. So want to tell you about some accomplishments just since July when we brought this to you and remind you a little bit about what each section entails. So the first element is facilities and devices. And that includes many things we've had in place for some time. Includes security cameras, fencing, drug dogs, safety vestibules. Also includes our processes for locking down doors, expectations for wearing identification badges, both for students and staff, the use of the Raptor system for conducting background checks on visitors. And then more recently, the addition of campus alarm systems and safety vestibule modifications. So with the leadership and assistance of our new safety coordinators that we added this summer, Doug Taylor and Pete Ramirez, and the help of our facilities department, we've made a number of enhancements since July in this area. First, we installed magnetic locks at every campus to limit access from the office area into the campus. We have included the infrastructure for magnetic card readers in the design of the Charter Oak Elementary and Lake Belton High School campuses. We've increased the use of drug dogs for random searches where appropriate and allowed by policy. We've evaluated our security camera system at Belton High School. We added 18 new cameras since we did that. We have a security guard monitoring cameras throughout the day. And we've established a district-level monitoring for all campuses across the system so we can literally pull up all of, any camera we want to at the district level. We installed a metal detector at the DAEP prior to the beginning of this school year. We purchased nearly, or over 500 locks for classroom doors to make it easier to lock those doors. Some of them had keys. You had to have a key to lock the door. And so, and that takes time to get your key out, or you might be a sub and you might not have a key. So you all approved the purchase of those locks. And as of last week, all of those locks have been installed on every classroom door so that they can be locked quickly and easily from the inside without the use of a key. So what we want to do moving forward is to study best practices for limiting access using the magnetic card readers and then develop a plan to retrofit existing campuses. And that's a project that would be expensive, would be likely included as a part of our capital planning projects document. So if you recall, we put a little placeholder there and hadn't identified the initiatives that we wanted to include. We want to continue to study access issues, especially for our larger campuses. We want to continue to evaluate the use and efficiency of security camera systems and install additional cameras where we see a need. And there have been a number of new products that have been made available across the country for school safety. And we just want to continue to listen and evaluate those products. And so we've been slow and methodical. This really is no limit to what you could purchase or spend for school safety. Element two is human resources and partnerships. And like element one, we've implemented strong partnerships, practices in this area. We've had, we've developed strong partnerships over the years with the Belton and Temple Police Departments. We've increased our number of school resource officers. And with the help of our two chiefs of police, chief of police, uh, police, Chief Ellis and Chief Mitchell, we have now have a sergeant-level position providing oversight to our SROs, both from the City of Belton and the City of Temple. And we have a lieutenant from each agency who is representing at our monthly SRO meetings with the district. And in the City of Belton, Deputy Chief Jen Wesley also regularly attends those meetings. At the high school level, we have campus security guards who serve as additional eyes and support for our campus administrators. Of course, we have school crossing guards in place. We've used the Texas School Safety Center as a resource for emergency planning. And we have conducted the required safety audits by the state. We've also established more frequent planning meetings with our SROs. We've shared our facilities with local law enforcement agencies to practice safety drills. So we have a lot already in place in this area, but we have made some enhancements since the summer. And I want to thank you for adding those two positions for us to be able to have Doug and Pete because they've been instrumental in this particular element in developing and expanding partnerships and strengthening relationships with local law enforcement agencies and community agencies, which was a big goal of ours when we added those positions. We knew that they would speak the same language and be able to communicate in ways that we couldn't. Doug has been a resource for our campus security guards this year. He's made some suggestions for improvements to increase the effectiveness of those positions, such as identifying the need for new golf carts. Sounds like a simple thing, but we needed new golf carts for our security guards to improve their productivity, the visibility, their ability to patrol and to move quickly across the campus. So we have ordered two new golf carts for security work. He also identified the need to provide uniforms for our security guards so that they can be easily recognized on campus. Simple, but he saw that need and pointed that out. And we've, we have done that. So in the top right-hand picture, corner there in that picture with Marcus, you can see the new uniform that was selected. Pete has expanded the membership of our district safety committee to include community agencies such as SitCog, Belton and Temple First Responders, Bell County Office of Emergency Management, and the Bell County Juvenile Probation Office. Doug and Pete have facilitated monthly meetings with our SROs. They've established a line of communication with the Texas Department of Public Safety, specifically the Temple Office. They've developed a relationship with the Central Texas Regional Advisory Council. And you may remember that you honored them as a Big Red Community Partner at our October meeting. And they've worked to cultivate relationships with other agencies, such as the Bell County Sheriff's Department. And those agencies will collaborate with the district during an emergency event. And so that has been beneficial to the district and to those agencies to be able to partner. All right, next element is communication, another important area for our comprehensive safety and security efforts. Of course, we already had phones in every classroom. We already had written documents, such as code of conducts and handbooks and emergency plans and flip charts. We already had a 911 alert assistant, system to inform the deputy superintendent when 911 is called. We already had a Skylark messaging system to keep parents informed. We already were using social media in a very robust way. And we did have a tip line for reporting safety and security concerns. So this fall, we made some enhancements into our communication efforts. We implemented the new anonymous alert system for parents and community members and students to report safety concerns. We provided safety directives for the first time for our staff. For example, our staff have been directed to keep classroom doors locked at all times. This month, we're transitioning to the I Love You Guys Foundation Standard Response Protocol for Emergency Response Language. And that's the communication tool that I talked about during our fall update sessions that allows us to be consistent and use a shared language and actions among all of our students, staff, and first responders that was endorsed by the Texas Safety, School Safety Center. We've trained our staff on the new protocol. We have posters on our campuses. We've encouraged our staff to discuss that protocol with our students. And while it doesn't change the actions that we take during emergencies, it gives us better communication strategies within enhanced terms and directives. We've worked closely with our principals to increase communications to parents regarding drills or individual campus incidents. This spring, we have plans to focus on a student and parent climate survey. And we'll be working closely with Thought Exchange. We use the Thought Exchange app as part of the committee process for attendance boundaries. I was able to go to some training on that in Austin and really could see how that might help us get some better feedback in surveys. And so we'll be using that and using a new format. Okay. And then the fourth element is training. Each of our, each year, we've provided training on campus emergency procedures and drills. But this has taken a, kind of a whole new life this year. We've, we've done a number of training sessions over the last several years on safe and civil schools and diversity and school culture. We've worked with the ADL. We've sent our administrators to anti-bias training. And we began last year using an online training program called Safe Schools to deliver training modules on child abuse identification and intervention, sexual harassment and misconduct, youth suicide awareness and prevention in health emergencies. This summer, we expanded our work with Emergentry that we started last year. You've heard a lot about that from Rochelle, with the implementation of our solid roots and bridges programs. We've trained campus teams to support Tier Two interventions for behavior. And we're continuing to develop campus teams to implement strategies to proactively support students who are struggling with behaviors. I'm getting close. I know it's long. We also have scheduled over 15 days of onsite coaching and support this year to assist our campuses with the Bridges work. We mandated three training sessions for all of our employees this year, the non-certified CPR, the citizens' response to active shooter events, the Stop the Bleed training, which was provided by health professionals all over the community as a result of our partnership with the Central Texas Regional Advisory Council. And I would just mention some of those agencies because it's a tremendous effort to train the number of people that we've trained. Acadian, McLean Children's Hospital, Baylor Scott &amp; White, the Belton Police Department, the Belton Fire Department, Air Evac Life Team, ambulance services, and Premier ER have all participated. And I'm excited to announce that by the end of January, we will have trained every one of our campus staff members in those three programs. So we've been steadily building and making progress there. We've also purchased 25 Stop the Bleed kits to place in our buildings, and those have been located conveniently next to our AEDs. And I'd like to point out that we have an excellent director of nursing in our district, Charlotte Smith. And I, where's Charlotte? Yeah. Where's Charlotte? Charlotte does a fantastic job. She's worked closely with the RAC to coordinate all of the training to make sure that we have the equipment that we need in our schools. A lot, we've done a lot here. Doug and Pete have, not only have we done the drills that we've done year after year in schools, but this year, we had Doug and Pete as eyes to observe those drills and provide specific feedback to us. And so they've done that, and then they've added some unannounced drills. Because typically, your principal schedules those and everyone does the drill. And so they've thrown some curveballs at our campuses and stopped and provided feedback on what we could have done better. They've attended multiple training sessions at the Texas School Safety Center and Tasby. They've conducted a tabletop exercise at Belton High School. So a good number of things have occurred there as well. We have identified another list of work that we want to do, though, in this area as well. So we want to continue with training. We want to train our staff to use a smart button mobile safety system that was created by the same company that supports anonymous alerts. We want to expand the ADL work with our teachers. We want to have more teachers have the opportunity to receive a series of anti-bias and diversity sessions. And the big one for us is to identify systems and best practices for threat assessment, ensure that we're actively training our staff to identify and intervene with students who may pose a risk. And we're watching and listening for the best system for that across the state and have not been able to identify that yet, but we're working. We want to update our online Safe Schools training for medical emergencies, such as MERT and Stop the Bleed. And then we want to update and implement protocols for suicide risk behavior that includes collaboration between counselors and campus healthcare professionals. And then the last area, certainly not least, most important comprehensive safety and security element that we have is our students. And they're the reason here that we're here, and we want to spend the most energy on them. We want to continue to teach them about social interactions, behavior, bullying, and self-management. And those things are probably the most important to creating safe school environments and really making sure the kids understand those things. So we've increased our commitment as a district over the last few years to developing strong school cultures. And that's why we've focused on those spotlights with you each month. We're really proud of that work because we know that culture has a definite impact on our students, our relationships with students, teachers, parents, and administrators, diversity, and even our beliefs and values that the school and community shares. We focused on the No Place for Hate initiative. We focused on digital citizenship. We've continued to help our students engage in service learning at all levels to develop empathy and compassion for others and help them understand that they're a part of a bigger community. We've implemented a number of programs, such as Police Explorers, K Kids, Rotary Service Clubs. We have elementary schools that are using after-school clubs to increase student interest and engagement. We've continued to refine our scope and sequence documents, our curriculum for counseling, counseling guidance lessons. And we have embedded social learning concepts into the curriculum. We also have implemented the Conscious Discipline Program at pre-K so that we begin to develop social skills early with our youngest students. And so we really have tried to identify all kinds of ways to engage our students and keep them in sync. And that includes providing innovative and engaging instructions, such as what we've done at New Tech with project-based learning. Some of the things that we have done recently since July, and I think, go to the next slide there. We have conducted an administrative retreat focused on safety using Design Thinking model so that we could stay focused on specific campus-based strategies and activities for culture with our students. We focused on counseling and support programs for students. We, Kim Chrissy Anderson moved from curriculum and instruction to Belton High School where she's now the Director of Secondary Guidance and Academic Advising. And so she's now providing leadership for our secondary counselors. We've focused on improving response time for secondary counselors to individual student counseling needs with a goal of meeting with students and providing follow-up within 24 hours. At the high school level, we've developed strong relationships with content leads from the Counseling Department to identify ways to support students, including pairing students with teachers who can make the best impact with their, or SEL connection with them. We used Kim's curriculum and instruction position to add Dr. Rochelle Warren as our Director of SEL and Multi-tiered Systems of Support. And we tasked her with helping us to increase our capacity to implement- And we tasked her with helping us to increase our capacity to implement an SEL program. And she has been assisting us in the review and design of systems to support our students. And she's also tasked with providing leadership to the elementary school counselors. She did begin a district-level focus group this fall to define our SEL framework and to provide a menu of materials and services for our campuses. We launched the Bridges program this year again, just to mention of that. Rochelle has been intimately involved with that and partnering with Jennifer Ramirez to lead the initiative. We've taken students to the No Place for Hate Youth Summit, and Rochelle has assisted our campuses with the No Place for Hate registrations and certifications. We also added an additional high school counselor this year and reassigned staff to increase our services at the DAEP. And finally, we would like to mention the Anonymous Alerts app. Again, that's for students, too. We trained our students. Robert Pryor produced a video that was used as a part of that communication effort and really wanted to make sure that students understood the purpose of the app and how to make a report, and then hung those pictures, posters in our campuses. Last slide. We have just recently established our first youth safety council at Belton High School. So you can see teacher Tanya Arnold Garcia here and four students who have applied for and received a charter through the Safe and Sound Schools Organization. These four student volunteers are our founding members, and they will begin to discuss improvements for their campus, and we hope some other students will join as well. Alyssa Parker in the top right-hand corner is the founder of Safe and Sound Schools. You might remember that she's the mother who lost a child in the Sandy Hook school shootings. So we want to continue to get better with our students as well. Again, we'll be studying threat assessment models. We want to complete our SEL focus group work that Rochelle has started. We want to brand our SEL program. We want that to be easily identified by our staff and families. We want to continue to provide high-quality professional development for our principals and counselors using organizations such as the Momentous Institute, which is a model SEL school in the Dallas area. We're looking to Castle, which is kind of the guru of SEL frameworks. And we have an opportunity to visit, make some site visits to Austin ISD, who is a leader in implementing SEL initiatives. So we'll be doing that as well. And then something new Rochelle brought to us that's only been around a few years, but we hadn't found it yet, but we want to have our counselors attend the Texas Association of Behavior Specialists Conference, which will be held in Round Rock. And that conference is actually organized in part by our emergency consultants, who are certainly experts in that area. We'll be working towards the implementation of a year-two Bridges plan to deepen the work that we started this year. We want to look at their tier-one interventions and revise our RTI documents and processes. I think I just gave you the district improvement plan for 2019-2020, didn't I? We'll be reviewing and updating our suicide protocols. We'll be looking at our scope and sequence documents for counselors. We need to analyze our counseling staffing ratios as we plan for next year's budget. And then we hope to be able to expand those school safety councils with students. And then finally, Pete has expressed a desire to include some students on our school district safety committee. So I want to thank you and commend you for supporting us as we continue to think about school safety and, again, systematically, thoughtfully, expand the work in our comprehensive safety and security elements. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I just want to thank you for all the work that you and your team have done, the entire staff. While we know that the student is at the center of everything that we do, it's certainly nice to hear of all the focal points that we're making sure not only the student is protected, but also the staff as well. So safety is a big concern, so I'm so glad that we've got a lot of focus on that.
Thank you.
Real quick question on the alert system, the app. How often are the students reminded to use it, how to use it?
I don't know. I could look to a couple of principals to answer that question. I will tell you, we don't have a problem with the students using.
Okay. That was another, it's like, has it tapered off?
That's why they gave me the funny look.
Okay.
In fact, I don't know if they've tapered off.
Well, maybe they need a different kind of reminding.
Yeah, but they need to be taught. You know, we're learning, right? We're learning together what's appropriate to report, who to report, how to report. And so we, you know, we just started in October. We have posters on every campus, and students are reporting.
Do you want to add anything to that, Jill? No? Okay.
Yeah. That was probably one of their biggest frustrations is that just the number of alerts that were coming in. And so we've, you know, we've just staying the course and helping teach students and realizing that, you know, once it's, the novelty wears off, perhaps, then we won't have, you know, some of the smaller things that could be handled in other ways. But we've gotten some really great tips of some problems we would have never known about had we not had that system in place. So it has been a valuable tool for us.
Thank you, Dr. Kincaid.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry to have taken so long.
No, you're fine. Good stuff. So next up, we'll consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the 2019-2020 school calendar. Dr. Mueller.
Good evening. This item provides you the opportunity to adopt a school calendar for 2019-2020 school year. I will tell you that the process begins early in the fall. We take and have a discussion with DEWIC, our District-Wide Educational Improvement Committee. Because DEWIC is fairly large, it's hard for that group to really get into the details other than just kind of a conceptual discussion about calendars. So I asked for a volunteer group out of DEWIC, and we ended up with five volunteers who kind of worked the details of the calendar this year. These volunteers were Emily Dosman, Amanda Nissar, Rebecca Kidder, Jessica Settle, and Sandy Garrett. So with that smaller group, we kind of worked the details. We ended up with three calendars that were considered. One of those calendars ended school prior to Memorial Day. There are all kinds of complications in doing that. So that calendar fell away, leaving us kind of two options. We returned to DEWIC, presented those two options. DEWIC reached consensus on one of those options, which is the calendar that you have before you tonight. Some of the features, well, first of all, the requirement for instructional time as a floor is 75,600 minutes. Now, that's not a target, but that's really a floor, 75,600 minutes. This calendar certainly meets that requirement and exceeds that number of minutes. You can see on this calendar, there are 173 student days. That's pretty much common to many calendars that you see across the state of Texas. And also common to calendars is a staff having 180, or teachers having 187 days, which is actually required by the Texas Education Code. This calendar starts next year on August 19th. We have four early release days for secondary students, two early release days for elementary students. We have 14 days of staff development or workdays built into this calendar for our teachers. Spring break is common across all, well, I guess not across all of Bell County, but for the most part, across Bell County. We did coordinate this calendar with all the Bell County school districts, as well as one out of Corial County, Coppers Cove. And so spring break is certainly common to those of us who are in this proximity. Also, we coordinated this calendar with Temple College and UMHB. One of the things that's a little bit different about this calendar is in October, historically, we have had a day set aside for parent-teacher conferences. Because of the ongoing nature of communication and the frequency of communication between teachers and parents, teachers actually ask, can we reconsider that and not do that in this calendar? Instead, create that as a staff holiday as well as a student holiday. And so that is what's before you today. Also, on this calendar, which is a little bit of a departure from last year or from the current calendar, is the day in November, which represents Veterans Day, and that is deemed a staff holiday and a student holiday. And then we have graduation on May 28th. And we have coordinated that with Bell County.
Thank you, Dr. Mueller. Is there any discussion? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed 2019-20 calendar as presented. Thank you. Janice Lee. Is there a second?
I think I wore you out.
Dr. Montgomery, all hands up. Yeah. It's been a long night. That passes unanimously. Thank you again, Dr. Mueller. And you're going to bring us up to the next, which is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to set trustee elections in Area 1, 3, and 5 and special election.
Yes, this is an opportunity to set the election and prove the order of election. The election this year will be scheduled for Saturday, May 4th. Trustees for Areas 1, 3, and 5 are up for general election this year. Those trustees representing in those different areas are Jeff Norwood for Area 1, Sue Jordan for Area 3, Manya Okozur for Area 5. And then in addition to that, we have a special election to fill an unexpired term for Area 2, which is Dr. Montgomery. The filing dates for the general election begin this Wednesday, January 16th, and extend through February 15th. The filing deadline for the special election begins as soon as tomorrow and ends on March And any questions that you have to answer?
Don't have any question, any discussion of that? Before we vote, I just really just want to just say this about this particular election. I definitely am going to file. This community, the students, this district, the staff, they deserve continuity of service. They need to have that, as Dr. Kincaid said earlier, they need to feel that cohesiveness. And so I would be remiss if I stepped away at this point. This is so important to me, and I would just ask my teammates up here to consider filing as well. So with that being said, I will consider a motion to set the election as presented. Is there a motion to approve? Okay. Mr. Flor, is there a second? Dr. Montgomery, thank you. All hands in favor. That is approved. Thank you, Dr. Mueller.
We do have election packets in my office, so if you decide that you want to file, then come by and pick those up.
Okay.
I will be coming by to pick one up.
Okay, great. Okay, great.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, it sounds like we're all coming to see you. Do we have any issues, concerns for future agenda administrative reports? Anything on this side?
Do you need our book back?
When you're ready to bring it back. You enjoy it for a few days. But we do need it back for the schools.
Okay, we'll bring the book back. Are there any issues on this side for future agendas or reports? No? Let's talk about future events. Identified a few. We just talked about the filing dates. Those are real important. We have our January 21st Student Holiday. We have January 25th through the 27th for the Addams Family Musical. We're all going. February 7th, we have superintendent evaluation meeting at 5:00. That's going to be in the conference room. Okay. And then our next regular meeting is February 11th. If there is nothing further, we are adjourned. Thank you all for joining us.